Good evening and welcome to the April 11, 2022 work session of Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one discussion item, but before we get to it, we do need to conduct a closed executive session this evening. And I'm gonna need a motion from the council in order to do that. Who'd like to make? Neil? Yeah, just make that into a motion.
Mayor, I move that we hold a closed executive session. Notice is, notice to the general public is given hereby that the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg plan to conduct a closed executive session immediately following its session on Monday, April 11, 2022. The session is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305b1i, "The appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction." The topic to be discussed is a personnel matter to conduct the city attorney's annual review. The closed executive session will be held pursuant to a motion properly adopted during the session of the Mayor and City Council on Monday, April 11, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, carries five zero, and we will have that immediately after this meeting. So next, we are delighted to welcome back Chuck Bean, the Executive Director of Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, to our chamber. It's always a pleasure to have you here, sir. Thank you, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Great to be here with you. Great to be here in Gaithersburg. I walked in with Councilmember Wu, and I think the discussion was, was it a long drive? And no, not as long as it used to be, because so many people are teleworking. So I had a straight shot up here, and great to be with you. I have a slide deck that I think you all were able to get in advance. And it's accompanied by a document called Region United Metropolitan Washington Planning Framework for 2030. And it's a combination of things that the COG Board and TPB has been working over the last two years. And now we're bringing them all together and looking at the nexus, the connections between transit and equity, housing, and our environmental goals. So the slide deck, the first one's just a background about COG and about the COG footprint. This is about 3,600 square miles. It's about 5.7 million people. About 660,000 people joined us in this footprint over the last decade. We forecast that about 400,000 additional jobs will come to this region or be created in this region this decade that we're in, and about 600,000 additional people. How we manage for that growth so that there's prosperity, but also inclusive prosperity, and so that there's accessibility or mobility, so people can get from home to work, and that we do that in an increasingly equitable way and increasingly green way is what this plan is all about. There's many things that COG does that I won't give you a long laundry list today. But one of the things is cooperative and consortium purchasing. So we saved Gaithersburg about $10,000 on Friday when we entered into a diesel reverse auction for the region and had suppliers bidding from around the country to provide diesel to our members around the region for the lowest price possible. So reverse auction took about five hours, and the net result was about savings of about $10,000 for Gaithersburg.
Thank you for that, by the way.
Going into the plan, those of you that have been around and been participating in COG for a decade or more and looking at your planning director, were involved in Region Forward, which was finalized by the COG Board in 2010. This looked at what kind of future do we want over the next few decades? It's really built on four pillars, and these are prosperity, accessibility, livability, and sustainability. The PALS acronym. So the plan I'm going to be talking about is built in on Region Forward, but it drills down, provides a lot more quantitative detail about that plan. And what's different also is equity. And in 2020, the COG Board said equity needs to be woven in through all that we do. I hope to give you a couple of examples tonight. Prosperity, accessibility, livability, sustainability, and equity. If I had come here about a decade ago, we would have been just coming out of the Great Recession. Maybe our region didn't experience it as much as the rest of the country, but our region sure experienced the next two, three, four years with sequestration and the major cutbacks in federal funding, both on domestic and military funding that affected our economy. But I would say in the last three, four years, we're picking up momentum. Got the word mojo in here. So there's the biggest economic development competition in history. Our region won it. That's Amazon's RFP for HQ2. For more than 40 years, a dedicated funding source for Womata eluded us, but that was solved in 2018. And great strides in walkable communities, air quality, any number of things. Even as the region's population has grown, and interesting how the region's population has diversified. And I think no one understands that more than the city of Gaithersburg, which I recall was one of the most diverse cities in the country. So coming up, this mojo that I'm talking about, this is a combination of four things. The housing targets. We were behind on the production of housing. The COG Board did an analysis and needed a jobs and housing balance, if you will, or excuse me, jobs and transportation and housing balance. That resulted in the housing targets. Climate Goal and Action Plan, a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030. That was approved by the COG Board in 2020. About six months later, after President Biden had been elected, he set that as an executive order as a goal for the country, that same number, 50% reduction. I'll get into high-capacity transit station areas and equity emphasis areas right now. So when we think about weaving equity throughout, we're really using a modifier to prosperity and thinking about inclusive prosperity. So you're hearing me talking about we need to optimize the land use around these high-capacity transit station areas. We need to emphasize these census tracts where there are low-income communities and make sure that all of these census tracts, all of these areas, are included in these opportunities. So Mr. Harris will remember as a member of TPB at the time that we did a really two-year analysis to look at where are their concentrations of low-income communities around the region? Where are their concentrations of communities of color or both? So our region has about 1,200 census tracts, and we identified 350 census tracts as equity emphasis areas. Every major jurisdiction in the region has some of these census tracts, equity emphasis areas. But as you can see from this visual, there's a concentration in Maryland. There's a concentration in Prince George's County, and even a concentration in Prince George's County, really inside the Beltway. This is a tabulation of those equity emphasis areas. And while these 350 census tracts are more dense than the average census tract in the region, they contain 30% of the region's population. So these census tracts, if you eyeball this, occupy only 10% of the region's landmass, but 30% of the region's population. So I think we've come to the conclusion there are many ways to approach equity, but from a geographic perspective, need to focus on these census tracts as an overall regional strategy. For folks that are as old as I am, remember the seminal work from the Brookings Institution, "Region Divided," and trying to find a lever for that region. Well, I think the idea of these 350 census tracts, there really wasn't one lever long enough that we could do one thing and make equity happen in the region. But looking at these 350 census tracts gives us some ideas, really 350 plans for inclusion in the region's, future region's prosperity. So here's a drill down that my staff did of the enumerated census tracts that are in or approximate to around Gaithersburg. And these are enumerated on our website. One could spend days looking at the maps and tools that we have. One can index the income levels of these census tracts and index other things. One can hold one variable constant and look at other variables. But I hope that it's a starting point. And one of the things that I'm sharing is, we've made a commitment to not do this only in transportation, where we had the biggest analytical muscle to look at this. Not do it in just public health, where our chief health officers stewarded a regional report called Uneven Opportunities, but transportation, health, and applying it to all of these domains. Our environmental staff, for example, are looking at this application to, if climate change were to cause heat increases, are there disparate impacts in heat islands around the region? If we're more worried about flooding in different ways, for the last couple centuries, we've known about river flooding in the region. But now we have these storms of the century that maybe happen every two or three years. Are we more concerned about overland flooding? And if we are, are there disparate impacts in some areas? So I had not thought of about tree canopies, but we can do that analysis too. Are there equal different tree canopies throughout all these census tracts? On our website, there's a very in-depth study about roadway safety and the correlation of fatalities and injuries and looking at these 350 census tracts compared to the region as a whole. And if there are more fatalities and injuries, why? How could we look at that? Is it environmental? Is it engineering? Is it something else? So I could probably do a whole hour just on equity emphasis areas, but I'm gonna segue with one last slide. And I would say Montgomery County has particularly embraced this idea of looking at these census tracts and applying it across many programmatic domains. So as part of the capital improvement program in Montgomery County, it prioritizes projects in equity emphasis areas, bonus points, if you will. In Green Bank legislation, that 20% of the funding must go to equity emphasis areas. At the COG Board on Wednesday, we'll have a presentation on the Purple Line. We'll also have a presentation on Embark Richmond Highway in Fairfax. And some of the analysis about equity emphasis areas and how it relates to transit access will be part of that presentation. I'm gonna move on to the second of four areas, and that's high-capacity transit station areas. We define high-capacity transit. You see the key in the lower left-hand corner as the 90 some Womata stations, metro, Mark VRE commuter rail, light rail, the purple line under construction, and Bus Rapid Transit. Not yet on the ground, except for in one place, Arlington-Alexandria right now, but plans over the next decade in Montgomery County and in Embark Richmond Highway in Fairfax. Multimodal will mean where two or more of those things are together in one area. So I think we have a table in here that I think I'm gonna need to go back and make sure that it is correct. Total of six HCTs. One, I'm understanding that should be more than one commuter rail, multi-system. It's possible that multi-system or multimodal, that the other Mark station might be caught up in that number. But I'll make sure that we get more details on that. And maps on the HCTs in the region are available on our website too. So we're looking at this not just from a transportation perspective, but from also a land use perspective, that we've made this collective investment in Womata, Mark, VRE, and how do we get the most out of it? We believe that land use is important transportation strategy. And in fact, when we looked at some things that could really move the needle, bringing housing closer to jobs, housing closer to transit, is one way to improve transportation. So this little dartboard here, the red refers to the half-mile walk shed that ideally, there'd be a one-half mile radius in a circle all around a station that would be walkable within a 10-minute walk. That is not, there's not a natural impediment. There's not some kind of human-made impediment, but be a wonderful 10-minute walk shed that would capture as much connectivity as possible. But we're also thinking beyond the half-mile walk shed. We're thinking about what's the possibility for a bike shed, if you will? That connectivity that it would extend beyond a half mile? The idea of a broader plan of a National Capital Trail Network. Thinking broad, longer than that is, what's the land use optimization for two-mile radius going out of these high-capacity transit station areas? The diagram there is a little micro-transit. It's not a regular bus, but a small bus. Flash bus is on-demand, on-call, two-mile radius that brings people to a metro station. We're thinking maybe out over the next decade. I'm not sure. But there are plans. There are pilots for autonomous shuttles. Maybe that's one intervention over the next decade or so for just bringing people back and forth between these hubs. So enhancing land use and improving access. When we think about transit-oriented development, one of the hallmarks is mixed use. It's one of the big changes between 20th century planning and 21st century planning. We're thinking about transit-oriented communities. Replacing the word development with communities, because development really isn't the end goal. Building of communities is. We're thinking of modifying, focus on mixed use, to put in the modifier, mixed use and ideally mixed income. So people of low and moderate income also have opportunity to be located, to reside in these high-opportunity areas. So one of the things I'm particularly excited for is this nexus. If we optimize the land use around these high-capacity transit and we provide more opportunity for inclusion from these equity emphasis areas, where's the overlap? So of the 225 high-capacity transit stations, 150 are on the ground right now. Additional 75 funded to be constructed by 2030. Of the 225, 168 overlap with one of these census tracts, overlap with an equity emphasis area. So many of you may have already studied Womata's joint development strategy that was released just last week, talking about additional 40 stations where joint development might be a focus. Well, as part of Womata's plan, they've overlaid those stations with this map of equity emphasis areas. So high opportunity with this access to transit and a focus on equity and inclusion. Blue Line Court in Prince George's County epitomizes this. This is a lift from their economic development platform. Their economic development platform also has a focus on housing and also has a focus on connectivity with these Womata stations. Going to the third of four, the housing targets. I think I've been presenting to you maybe a couple of years ago, some of these housing targets. The background was our region was producing enough housing for the jobs that were coming to the region and the population that was coming with those jobs up until the Great Recession. So we need to be producing at 32,000 or so new units per year. We've come back since Great Recession to about 23,000, but there's been a gap, if you will, in the last few years. And it's a major, it's a major tug, it's a major pull. But we're gonna have better transportation outcomes if we can house our workers and we can house those workers approximate to those jobs or transit, not two hours away. So the housing targets looked at the amount of accessibility, meaning close to jobs and activity centers or near high-capacity transit. And then also did a, we did a profile with Urban Institute of the workers, the workforce of the future, what those household incomes could afford. And came to a target, three of 75% of housing should be affordable to low and moderate, middle-income households. That's the new housing that would be built on top of our existing housing stock of about 2.1 million units now. Another 320,000 needed 2020 to 2030. So Mayor Bowser's order on housing for the District of Columbia, 36,000 new units by the year 2025, follows that same slope that we talked about, the production that needed to increase. City of Alexandria adopted housing targets, given their population, given their net jobs of how many newer targets. Again, it follows that same slope. Bringing into fourth of four, regional climate goals. Those of you that were involved in Region Forward in 2010, the COG Board set a climate greenhouse gas reduction goal by 2020 of 20%. We're still analyzing those numbers. I guess good news, bad news. Bad news is, we're not gonna hit that 20% reduction. Or we didn't, thinking of the past tense. We're still analyzing the numbers. Good news is, we're gonna come pretty close. It's gonna be like 18% reduction between over 2,005 levels to 2020. But that 50% reduction, which was set by 2020, is gonna involve unprecedented effort. When we think about that effort, we call it a multi-sector effort. So the three sectors of the energy generation and the grid, so cleaner electricity. Think about the built environment for more zero-energy buildings, and then the transportation sector. Zero emission vehicles, but also mode shift and other things. This is a diagrammatic, what the big chunks are. But we have pages and pages if folks might get into the details of what it would take. More broadly, 33 actions of what it would take are outlined in our 2030 Climate and Energy Action Plan, 33 collective actions by the region. Our organization supports jurisdictions in their, often it started with a climate plan for government operations, then often extends to climate and energy action plan for the entire jurisdiction. And either COG supports this or contractors we have under, vendors we have under contract perform this work. Then within that overhang, there's some specific work that we do with jurisdictions. What's on the upswing the most is working with jurisdictions on their electric vehicle deployment plans. So we're working with three or four jurisdictions right now, and I'm expecting that that number will increase over the next six months by at least a half dozen more jurisdictions. My hope is that there'd be the possibility for jurisdictions to work together on these EV deployment plans, because so many trips are initiated in one jurisdiction, go to another jurisdiction. Also because of the expertise of learning from, learning from one another. How do you put an EV into a multifamily? How, what's the best considerations for the grid, et cetera? And then if we do it together, there's a possibility of economies of scale. So the consortium or group purchasing that jurisdictions can do, if we get a couple of big counties all buying together, and the region can ride that buying power. So we're hoping that all of this planning framework is not gonna be something that sits on the shelf. So these are the categories of things that we have available. We have a number of technical assistance grants. Our newest is the Housing Affordability Planning Program. Transportation Land Use Connections, or TLC, is something that we've run for years and years. I think my staff wanted me to note that the city received 45,000 in last year or two for a concept and feasibility study, industrial drive to West Deer Park Road filling in a bicycle gap. So what we're trying to do with these TLC grants is provide some early-in ideas that help with good outcomes, but it kind of gets the project going. The second category, forward-focused strategies. We hope that our regional plans, if a jurisdiction needs a jumping-off point, that regional plan can be a template. And then maps, tools, professional development. So lots of data on our website, lots of support that our staff can give to you or Sydney manager, Bradley's staff, to help with these efforts. I mentioned one of these technical assistance grants. So we're hoping to announce the first winners of this within the next two months. And National Capital Trail Network would be any number of, an example of any number of things that can be hung in this framework to achieve multiple outcomes. Some of our transportation goals, mobility goals, some of our greenhouse gas reduction goals. And we would hope that as we think about the next miles that might be constructed for the child network, the considerations of equity, connectivity would be prime considerations for choosing what would be the priorities. All this in the context of a once-in-a-generation opportunity. We're doing our best to help jurisdictions seize the moment of the investment that President and Congress have brought to the country with the bipartisan infrastructure bill. Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions as best I can on this or any other COG or regional matters from you and the council.
Great. Thank you for a terrific presentation, really informative and I think sort of a healthy exercise for us to think region-wide periodically. Not that we don't usually, particularly Neil's always lecturing us on TPB. He does a great job. He's a terrific advocate for COG in the city of Gaithersburg. So a couple of questions. I mean, it really is sort of thought-provoking. Actually, before I even get to my questions, the, just a comment. When we talk about thinking about equity in all that we do, I think a lot of what the sort of policies and matters that you bring up are premised on the idea of a city that has pockets of, like distinct pockets of certain type, certain demographics, certain socioeconomic status profiles. And while, you know, the city of Gaithersburg does have a newer side and an older side, it's not, I grew up in Miami. It's not like you can say, here's where, you know, a certain type, the Haitian people live. And here, you know, in Gaithersburg, one of the beautiful things about it is, it is pretty, people are pretty dispersed in neighborhoods. It's just something that I think about, which is good, but also makes it challenging to address certain, when you're trying to, you know, target and serve people in certain ways. Anyway, that's just me rambling. A couple of questions. You, in the chart about the authorized building permits, the number of, the demand for housing and the number of housing units that are being produced. I sort of feel like Gaithersburg, we've had, we've been pretty productive. We run our own planning and zoning, as you know, and we've put a lot of stuff in the pipeline. We've approved a lot of projects. I feel like we're doing our part to drive that thing up. I'm not so sure it's the same in Montgomery County. But how would you characterize what you're seeing sort of from us and from others versus other jurisdictions that COG covers?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You've said a lot there. And if I could try to take it a little bit in chronological order. First, a comment about Mr. Harris being a great advocate of COG in Gaithersburg. Well, I can tell you that he's been a great advocate for Gaithersburg inside COG and inside TPB.
That's awesome.
Some comments on some of the demographic, excuse me, demographic trends in the region. I think if you go back a generation or a generation or two, the Eisenhower era, about 33% of all of our jobs in the region were with the federal government. This is truly a federal government town. And now it's about 11%. So we diversified the economy. Some of those jobs, of course, have gone to the private sector, so a lot more contracting has been done now. Go back to the 70s in terms of who lived here. It was about 4% of our region's population were foreign-born. And now I'd estimate it at being about 26% of our region population is foreign-born. Think about the growth, the people that are filling the jobs that have emerged in our region. It's really because of foreign migration. If it was just domestic migration, we would have had a population loss. So it's something that I think is more characteristic of northern metropolitan areas. Really, any population growth is fueled more by foreign immigration than domestic migration. So the robust economy, even with the number of job openings that we still have, you know, I think is thanks to immigration. In terms of housing, I would say In terms of housing, I would say that the background on the slide that I showed with the keeping up capacity, keeping up with demand. A lot of that was fueled by housing production in the outer suburbs. While I would cite Frederick Charles, Northern Montgomery County, Prince William and Loudon particularly, for a decade or more, two of the fastest-growing counties in the country. So the production there has slowed. You know, honestly, some of that production led to some of the transportation challenges that we're experiencing today. So it's not only production, but production in the right place. So I think there's an honest debate in Montgomery County about the role of housing, the role of housing in economic development plans. So that will be, I think, answered over the coming months with... I believe the title is Thrive 2050, and the political races that are happening right now. I would offer that in Prince George's County, there's a similar debate about housing and the role of housing. And the county executive there has said, as part of the economic development platform, housing and housing for workers and housing in the right place, close to these activity centers and high-capacity transit station areas, is central to her plan. So they've enumerated a target, 26,000 housing units in Prince George's County. So there's an ongoing debate about the importance of housing. I think that your characterization sounds spot-on to me what Gaithersburg has done and what Gaithersburg has experienced in this regard.
Thank you. One more question, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues here. But you mentioned this concept of zero-emission buildings. And the city of Gaithersburg has been aggressive for more than a decade on our green building standards. We may have been one of the first cities in the country to adopt both a commercial and residential green building standard. But it's not exactly zero emission. Is that an attainable goal at the moment?
It is possible. It has happened. But you're putting this in a broader context is instructive, that green building standards might vary. So zero-emission buildings might be the optimal, the nirvana. I would say, yes, it is possible, but US policymakers need to balance, of course, economic development needs, needs of the community. I think the aspiration for greener buildings is what we're trying to do as a region. The built environment is one of the top three of the sectors that we need to focus on to achieve these goals.
Agreed. Well, thank you for that, and thank you for all you do and your team at COG to help the region. And I will open it up. Neil?
So first of all, thank you, Mayor and Chuck, for your kind words. You know, I was afraid I was just being a pain in everybody's neck, but I appreciate it. Thank you, Ryan. So, you know, I was really pleased to see this, the slide with the triangles on what it would take to meet the 2030 goal. Because, you know, a lot of what I heard when I first joined TPB was focused on mode shift as being the ultimate answer. But as we've seen from the data recently, it's, you know, there's some bigger opportunities to really improve our climate goals, and they seem to fit together. So, I mean, according to the data I've seen from the organization, 50% of the carbon emissions are coming from buildings in this region. And that's huge, so anything we can do to improve that. And if we're going to move towards zero-emission vehicles, which I know Councilman Spiegel already has, and hopefully I'm on the waiting list at this point, we need better electricity as well. So those are really important, and I think that priorities really fit the data, and I think that's great. One thing that I, you know, I'm not necessarily looking for a lot, a detailed response today, but I'm a little... I'm curious how we meet our housing goals by focusing on transit-oriented development. And I understand the need for it and the reason that that's considered important. But if we focus our housing development on a very small subset of the available land, it seems that, you know, economically, it would make the land more expensive and make it hard for that housing to be affordable. And plus, a lot of people who are buying houses are, you know, young families that want a little space and a yard. I mean, one of the things we've seen, and I don't know if I've mentioned this to you before, Chuck, but here in Gaithersburg, we did some research a few years ago and discovered that most of the people that work in Gaithersburg don't live in Gaithersburg. They're commuting from less expensive land areas farther north from here. And the people that live in Gaithersburg seem to be working in Rockville and Bethesda and places like that. So I think there's some challenges there that we're going to have to wrestle with and figure out. So I'm going to make one last point and just say thank you for the work that COG did in bringing Amazon here, because I'm now in my fourth week of working at Amazon Work Services. I'm sure that wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for that. So, you know, I keep seeing more and more people getting hired, so it's obviously doing a lot of good.
Yeah, well, thank you, Sarah. You know, COG has said that you were one of the more vocal advocates on TPB, that we could be doing things differently, we could be doing this analysis differently. And COG is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region, so responsible federal... As that federal designee to produce a long-range plan and a six-year transportation improvement program. And one of the carrots being participating in that is for any transportation project to receive federal funding has to be in that plan. Mr. Harrison and others said, well, we need to rethink how we approach this. Are we getting the outcomes that we want? And that led to some more in-depth scenario analysis. And I traced the genealogy of some of our housing work. Is that we can, if we can bring more housing closer to jobs, we can get better transportation outcomes. It looks like housing, it looks like land use, but we get some better transportation outcomes. I would say, and everything to make a point, when one might need to be purist. So we discussed with Mayor Ashman about the zero-emission buildings. It would be, it's possible, but it's more difficult. I'm really using the word, verb optimize. Optimize the land use around high-capacity transit stations, and yes, the focus on the half-mile. But what would the mile radius look like? What would be the two-mile radius? I think of the extending that logic, optimize would look at activity centers. These are regional activity centers that COG's been working with for over 20 years. May not be served by high-capacity transit, so not all of the 141 activity centers are served by high-capacity transit. It might be roadways. But that connectivity of people to jobs, and if we can shorten that commute, that's what we're overall aspiring to do. But I grant you, there's the, what is it, the platonic ideal? And then there's the real world and where we can make progress.
I'm glad you're tackling the hard problems, because there's obviously not an easy answer, so thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go to Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chuck, nice to meet you. Thank you for your presentation. I have more, I think, comments and maybe requests than questions. Number one, it really did kind of jump off the page on our packet, page number 14, just seeing the number of equity areas within the city limits of the city of Gaithersburg. I think it's eight or nine by my rough count there on the map. And it's more than just on the east side of our city. I think oftentimes, we even had the conversation when we were looking through the deck together, that we only think of it as an east versus west. But there is a large number of our residents here in the city that are in one of these census tracts. I want to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Harris made about needing better electricity, particularly with regard to, you know, clean buildings, access to plug-in vehicles. In looking at where we were going to put electric chargers around our city, one of the reasons we could only have one supercharger on the east side of the city was because of the condition of the infrastructure, that it couldn't support the higher-capacity chargers. So, you know, with that infrastructure, you know, we're the older side of the city on the east side. And, you know, if these things are going to happen, we need to invest in the infrastructure. I want to talk a little bit about, you know, bringing, putting jobs and housing together. And obviously, that's incredibly important. And the opportunity to talk regionally, as Mayor Ashman said. One of the things that I've noticed, and one of the things that I talked about often when I was running for office last year, was typically, our region, we consider the DC and the surrounding regions as kind of a hub-and-spoke. And everything feeds the beast of DC, whether it's the MARC, whether it's BRT. Everything's flowing downhill. As we've shown here in Gaithersburg, where, you know, we're developing this biotech center. We have, you know, we greenlit the new headquarters for Novavax. We have other biotech coming here. And I would like to challenge the leaders across the region in thinking about housing and thinking about jobs, putting the jobs also upstream, like we're trying to do here in Gaithersburg. But then build our transportation network so that people can do what is currently called county commuting and coming up to us, so that people who live down-county can come to these great jobs that we are putting into Gaithersburg. Because I think, quite frankly, most of the time, we're only thinking, how can we get folks from the outskirts down and inside the Beltway? So I would challenge our leaders to think differently, so that we can at these opportunities, whether it's, you know, what might be coming at Lake Forest or around the MARC station with the override of the veto, hopefully getting more investment in the Brunswick line. Let's use some of these resources smartly. And how can we bring folks from Prince George's County up here to Gaithersburg to work? So that was, I guess, my request. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. You said a lot there, and...
I tend to do that, sorry.
Oh, it's all on-spot. And just starting with the equity emphasis areas. I think what we're seeking to do is put these census tracts on the map, so they're considered. And how it's permeated in Montgomery County through Nancy Navarro's resolution that the council approved is what we're trying to do, and how they came into Womata's joint development strategy is what we're trying to do. Now, the specifics on the electric vehicles, yep. I can measure what comes out the tailpipe, might be zero, but it depends on what went into the charging. So it needs to be that clean electricity, some form of renewable. And if the grid isn't ready, that's an infrastructure problem. I think how we might be thinking about this cluster of issues, just taking on the EV, for example. There are bigger forces at play than this city and COG. So some of those forces are the state of Maryland, or the federal government, or the private sector. So thinking about the opportunities in the bipartisan infrastructure law applied to EV, or EV deployment plan for the region. There's the formula funding that'll be coming, that is coming through the state of Maryland, go to the cities, counties and the cities. That'll be for the broad brushstrokes. I would imagine that there's an opportunity for the region, if we work together, to look at potential for preventing EV deserts. And that might be more the discretionary funding, the competitive funding. So on the formula funding, if we could find opportunities to exhort M.V.D., I'll be talking about their plans and how it could be aligned, how that formula funding could be applied. While we're also talking about, well, this census tract's a little bit harder to get to. But the Biden administration's talking about climate and equity as cornerstone, so that might be particularly right. And I know that peel the onion, there's challenges with the grid, et cetera. But hopefully, some other tool can help our utilities to get to the place where we want them to be. That was a long answer. There's probably even a longer answer coming on the second part. But I'll try to be more succinct as we think about conceptual changes that lead to real-life changes. You talked about the hub-and-spoke. I would say that the idea that this region's economy, population, job centers is really evolving from a hub-and-spoke to a network of job centers. So Tyson's has more office space than the city of Miami, just one example. New Carrollton's future, Largo's potential in Prince George's. So Gaithersburg potential, I was in the city of Manassas just a couple of weeks ago. Similar conversation, Micron is there. I understand that Micron is the Commonwealth of Virginia's largest exporter. Big plant of chips near Manassas. So as we think about the opportunity to connect that and National Landing in Arlington, well, the connective tissue there is regional rail, that's VRE. So I think the conception of, let's stop calling it commuter rail, start calling it regional rail. And what the General Assembly in Maryland is looking at with revitalization of MARC and the vision towards regional rail, that there could be that kind of movement during the day, that those trains don't just dead-end at one place, sit there for several hours and come back. But it can be that kind of regional rail service, possibly without reinventing all the tracks and all the cars. So hopefully, those examples of Micron and Manassas, the example that you gave in Gaithersburg, provide some additional fuel to what you're contending, that it's more of a network of job centers. There is the opportunity for the reverse commute. It's not only anecdotes, but so many 20-somethings that I understand have a job at Capital One. Or yesterday, it was somebody at Choice Hotels in Rockville. But they don't go there anymore. They live in DC. They've chosen to live in the hub, and when they need to go, maybe once a week, they're doing that reverse commute. So apologize that I gave you a longer response to your question, but I hope that, I want to show that much of what you said resonates with our thinking.
Great. Thank you so much.
We'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to jump on this EEA horse, this Gaithersburg, for a second. And the mayor spoke to it. The map, this is a question, does it look this way? Is a primary criteria race and ethnicity? And because Gaithersburg has one of the most diverse cities in the country. Does it, does the map look like that because we're so, the diversity is so spread out throughout the city?
The fundamental criteria is low-income communities or concentrations of communities of color. So when I say that the analysis of these census tracts are indexed, as a policy matter, the TPB set on an index of 1.5 times the concentration of low-income communities compared to the region as a whole. I'm forgetting the number of and/or communities of color, but I can get that information and send it to you. Lots of information on our website for equity emphasis areas. So I'm not quite answering your question, but providing a little bit more data on it.
Okay, all right. No, I'm happy to take a look also. And nice to meet you, Chuck, and thank you for this presentation. It's been extremely enlightening. Another, and maybe this is a statement, where the regional housing targets. As population grows and outgrows the housing capacity, the market rate is what we see today. So as, and I see in your chart, it says target one, amount, target two, accessibility, target three, affordability. Is that the priority? Would we do a mount first? And I ask because if we were to put housing in close to transit now with the capacity as it is, that housing is too expensive for, most to afford. So the folks who are most in need of housing close to transit would not be able to afford to live there. So as we increase the capacity, the market rate decreases. Yes, hopefully, that's the easy math. Affordability becomes somewhat more achievable. That word affordability is tricky, though. Is this the priority, to increase capacity first, so you can drive the market rate? Is this the priority, to increase capacity first, so you can drive the market rate down, and then gain more affordability?
Yeah, thank you, it's a, it's a great question. Do my best to give a simple answer, and then go into more details. I would say that we view these three targets as co-equal, that there's not a prioritization amongst all three. I would say, if part of your analysis is that, well, fundamentally, if there's a supply and demand problem out of whack, then affordability, of course, is gonna be out of whack. I would say that that's where we are now. I would say that we're at a housing deficit right now, that's part of our strain in affordability at all household, household income levels. There's a article in the Post today about Amazon's investment in housing affordability in the region, I think the number is about 750 million that Amazon has put in. And there's a bit of a critique in this Post analysis that of their target of household incomes that would benefit, I believe that their target is something between 30% to 80% of area median income. And the Post article talks about, well, the funding so far has really benefited the 50% to 80% of area median, median income. I would say that this is probably getting back to our earlier conversation about striving for the very best, where I would say this has made a very important contribution. I think the, the things that I'm weaving in about housing affordability and supply is that I would say that it's been demonstrated that if there's not enough supply at these different income strata, that those at 120% of area median income, if there's not enough supply, are soaking up the housing that's more at the 100% of area median income, and there's an unfortunate domino effect. So, we need to make contributions at all levels, we need to make improvements on, on supply. So, remember when I said I'd give a simple answer, try to give a simple answer, and then give it more, more meat on it? So, does that respond to your inquiry?
It, it does, particularly the, the impact in the capacity, because, to your point, that's where, that, that's where you drive, you're gonna drive the market.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's, those as our income strata where, like, you know, we can get the housing that, that we need. There's different income strata where there are government programs, and that middle strata, there's not necessarily government subsidized programs, nor can they attain that market. So, I, I think, not speaking for that particular contributor to housing, but I think that has been their, been their, been their analysis. But, housing of all types, and so much of our landmass is focused on single-family zoning, and that can only be that kind of housing. That might be part of the analysis, is the region needs to dive deeper on, and could there be an understanding of greater housing production if the land that I own, that's exclusive single-family zoning, could be changed into a duplex by the owner's right, triplex, or quadriplex, and other, other housing forms? But, now, now, Mayor, I think I'm going on in more details than the council member was eliciting.
You, you're gonna make me take a dive into zoning, that, for that very fact, where single-family housing versus multifamily housing, particularly when there's, when the land doesn't allow to build, to continue to build, and capacity is in need, so. But, but there's a six-hour-long conversation.
Six-year conversation, but it's, it's all part of, when we discuss optimizing the, the land used to achieve the policy goals that we're striving for, I would suggest that this would be a reasonable part of that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go to Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor. Chuck, great to see you again.
Thank you.
Great to have you back in Gaithersburg. Thanks to you, thanks to all of the COG staff for all the work that you do, we really appreciate you, and as you can see, we're an engaged member of COG, and try to take as much advantage of participating, and also squeezing out of the resources and the, you know, the, the intellectual heft that you have among your staff and other folks who are involved in COG, so thank you. I think that the framework corresponds, interestingly, and overlaps a lot with some of the work that our council is doing right now on our strategic planning process. Obviously, there are some different considerations at the broader region or regional level than there are gonna be at our municipal level, but I think that there's a lot of, to use an overused word, synergy, and particularly with these issues of equity, and housing, and sustainability, which, as you know, and as you've heard tonight, the city is doing our part to try to be a leader in on a lot of those topics. I'm also really glad to see that, and I haven't played around with it yet, but that your mapping tool that you discussed tonight is sort of somewhat interactive, it sort of reminds me of the GIS tools that we are so fond of here in the city, that can be used for a lot of really interesting analytical approaches to, to issues, and trying to figure out what the policy answers are to some of those issues. And I wanna follow up on something Councilmember Henderson was asking you about. I guess the question is, can we use the mapping tool that you presented to index those EEAs to sort of figure out which ones are included because they meet the criterion for economic issues, or which ones are part of the EEAs because they meet the criterion for racial diversity, for example, or which ones are both? And if we can do that with the indexing on this tool, then that might answer the question that we have about Gaithersburg's own census tracts, which might be interesting, and I don't know if you know the answer to that off the top of your head, but it might be an easy answer, so that's my first question, I've got a couple others.
The answer is yes.
There you go, easy.
Yes, I think you can hold, hold constant for median income, you can hold constant for racial characteristics of that census tract, or, or both.
Okay.
So, this, you know, once, take income, income aside, look for concentrations of Asian communities around the region, Latino communities, Black, African-American communities, one can do that, one can look for more, that index more than the 1.5 concentration that I talked about, one could dial it up to 1.75 or two, for example, to get really a profile of each of these census tracts.
Great, that's good to know, I think that'll be very interesting for us, and we'll, we'll follow up and take a look at the data. And then, a couple of comments, not necessarily questions, but obviously, you're welcome to respond. First, I was really surprised after the mayor's comment about the theoretical ideal of, you know, zero emissions buildings, that no one else brought up, the, the net-zero energy residential test facility at NIST, which is right here in our backyard, particularly since Councilmember Henderson and City Manager Bryley and I actually just took a tour of that facility last week. So, it is not just theoretical, it is actually possible, at least in the NIST lab setting. But that's a good segue to, you know, what you were talking about earlier, the, the platonic ideal versus the real-life impacts and solutions of these, you know, big issues and big problems that we're discussing tonight, and that COG has grappled with for decades, and I know that you and I, in our own personal conversations some years ago, when I was on the COG board, you know, were about, how do we bridge the gap between the ivory tower sort of philosophical analysis of what to do, and the practical, this is sort of my interest, is the practical implications and the practical solutions, and how we actually roll those out. And I, I agree that COG, and, and the region as a whole, has had some really great wins in recent years, as you highlighted in some of the early slides in your presentation tonight, whether it's setting aside the, the historical cannibalization of businesses to lure Amazon, and to work more cooperatively on economic development regionally, or whether it's, you know, working to advocate to Congress and get the funding for the region for Metro, Womata, and other things. But, in thinking about the transit element, the high-capacity transit element, and having sat through countless, you know, public meetings and, and policy discussions about bus rapid transit, and the corridor cities transitway, and having watched the pendulum swing over the years from, oh, it might be a possibility, to, oh, now it's, you know, never gonna get built, to maybe it's a possibility again, maybe there's a new iteration of it, you know, what I'm thinking about is, how do, how do we, together with COG and our regional partners, continue to figure out how to surmount these inter-jurisdictional challenges, or intra-jurisdictional challenges, in some cases within the state of Maryland, for example, over things that affect our ability to make great strides in high-capacity transit, and particularly in our immediate area here in Gaithersburg, because we're not, you know, on a metro line. And as Councilmember McNulty brought up, you know, with EV chargers and other things as well, that is something that I am sort of really focused on, how do we take all these great ideas and translate them into real actions for our own city that can help the greater good of the region and COG's mission over time while, while helping us? And that's, that's a big question, I don't expect you to necessarily answer tonight, it's one we've all been grappling with for years, but that's what I am particularly interested in. I'm looking for the ways that we can take the framework, take the resources, and put them into real practice. And so, I appreciate all the work that you've done over the last few years to really demonstrate that that's doable with the wins that we've gotten, but we wanna get more wins, of course, in the near future. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, COG does the forecast for the region for the next 10 years, 20 years, 25 years, about the number of jobs, housing, and population. And from that was derived the imbalance of the jobs and population to the housing. So, we forecasted over this decade an additional 245,000 units, on top of the 2.1 million that were, that were here, but based on the number of jobs and people coming, we really need, needed 325,000. So, I'm warming up to, to your question about the importance of thinking about these areas. So, the map that's in front of you right now, hopefully I got it to slide 14 in front of you, is the map of the 225 high-capacity transit station areas, again, 150 on the ground, and additional 75, not somebody's wish list, but are meeting our criteria of funded, reasonable expectation of funding. So, these nodes, just a half-mile radius around all of those occupy just 10% of the region's landmass. But we forecast, we reasonably forecast that this 10% will absorb 40, 40% of the region's population growth. So, 60%, 600,000 this decade, 40% of that will be coming to just 10% of the region's landmass. That compels some people, more compelling is the economy and job growth. We forecast that 55% of the job growth will be in the, in these areas. So, these are very important areas for, for, for our economy. You know, I think economic development orthodoxy talks about agglomeration, and innovation hubs, and the creative class, and being able to find synergy, bump into each other. So, as one thinks about Montgomery County in general, and the biohealth, biohealth economy, it's likely to be important that the transit and land use around these innovation hubs is gonna be very important in order to foster that, and particularly important for Montgomery County, Gaithersburg, to be able to foster that creative, the entrepreneurial, that would be accompanying that kind of biohealth generation. Often is the transit and the land use around that transit. From a economic development director from Fairfax, he said, he would say to me, Chuck, don't worry about marketing the region, we got that, just make the product better. And by that, he meant the transportation land use and, and housing. So, I think for charting the future, these are the critical things of local jurisdiction, if they get the ear of the county, get the ear of the state, can, can make happen. Probably take too long to look at the evolution, or the pros and cons, between heavy rail, light rail, and bus rapid transit. I personally would say that discussing with a supervisor in Fairfax County, the area includes the Route 1 corridor, and the Route 1 corridor connects the city of Alexandria down to its southern, southern hub. And the largest employer in Fairfax County is not Capital One, it's not in Nova, turns out it's not in Tyson's or Resin, it's our Fort, Fort Belvoir. So, it's connection to Fort Belvoir. Looking at Fort Belvoir, for example, most of the housing for the jobs that are on the fort, on that installation, are not on that installation, almost like 40 to 1 is somebody who told me, housing in the county. So, the nexus of economic development with transportation planning and, and with housing, and renewed focus on equity emphasis areas, BRT plans in Fairfax County, for example, clearly annotate where those census tracts are, and like the major discussions about the Purple Line construction, how do you create more opportunity without creating displacement? Relates back to our, our, our housing goals, but as challenging as those things might be, this is what we're focused on.
Rob.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chuck, as always, for the presentation and the information. You, you kinda made me shudder there when you mentioned Fort Belvoir, because I quit my job there, because I can get there in 40 minutes, and then it would take me 40 minutes to get on post. And so, thanks for the trauma. I'm just gonna go through a few notes that I was taking, one of them was what, kinda what Councilmember McNulty was talking about before, with respect to, you know, kind of utilizing COG and the resources that it provides, particularly with respect to the information on EEAs, and kind of lessons learned from around the region, so that we can focus, kind of the lessons learned and the tools available in, in addressing the EEAs within Gaithersburg. And so, I think you gave a few of the examples as to how that census data becomes useful, particularly in funding at the federal level, shining a spotlight when, for example, county legislation is adopted that focuses on it. So, I think that's great. And I don't really have a question there, unless, are there any other tools that we can be utilizing and optimizing this data for, to kind of, looks like focusing on the east side of Gaithersburg?
Yeah, I think we have as many tools focusing on the transportation system as we would have on the equity emphasis areas, so one can be looking at both. As I was noting, the nexus where those two ideas come together, for me, is the most interesting, because while there might be 350 equity emphasis areas around, around the region, where, where to start, where to focus is always a policy question. As you see, there's some census tracts in way northern Frederick County and the border of Pennsylvania, that's gonna be a whole different dynamic, or southern Charles County with Cobb Island, compared to those equity emphasis areas that are close to this opportunity, like in Bark Richmond Highway, Blue Line Corridor, the, the Purple Line, and I think we're trying to put more of a focus on the opportunities with MARK, MARK and VRE. So, there are, are lots of tools. If a council member can't readily access them, you can always provide a tutorial, or get staff to help. You know, City Manager Bryley, Deputy City Manager Enzinger are very active participants within COG, and contribute their voice to the other city and county managers. And as we work on new things, such as the focus on racial equity, really, that began with a city-county manager retreat in 2018, in which we engaged the Government Alliance for Race and Equity, or GARE. And when that morphed into an opportunity to do a year-long cohort, Gaithersburg was one of the 10 jurisdictions to be part of that first cohort. So, we have dozens of subject matter committees, and police chiefs and fire chiefs, but in my tenure, over the last 10 years, I think we've added three, one is a focus on food security, which is the newest, the earliest one was in 2013, the 911 Directors Committee, all convening to think about how to get to next-generation 911, and the third of the three of the... And the third of the three was the Chief Equity Officers Committee, which we stood up subsequent to that work with GARE. And I hope that, that, that crowdsourced learning of all the jurisdictions sharing has also informed some of the work here in Gaithersburg. I'm kind of looking at City Manager Bryley for affirmation that some of that work has continued in implementation in, in Gaithersburg. So there's some things we don't do because we try to focus, but we have dozens of subject matter committees that your staff are participating in. And if we can be a better assistance to make those tools or reports available to you, we will endeavor to do so.
It, it'll be interesting, particularly as we were talking, I think, inordinately so, on transportation solutions and development solutions, particularly on the east side of Gaithersburg relative to, you know, the past. And it's kind of exciting to be able to do so and think through the, the issues and the, that come with that and having the resources and tools available at a regional level so that we get it right. Just skip through some of my notes. So one of the comments, optimization of land use and, and, you know, kind of coming into, being part of the discussion, I would say it's probably the 800-pound gorilla in the discussion, particularly in Montgomery County, particularly with respect to, I guess, the furthest aspect of optimizing land use would be the collapsing of zoning, particularly around high-capacity transit nodes. What are you seeing in the, in the region in that regard? As far as different strategies and approaches? Because again, I see it coming to a head in, in the county fairly soon, particularly with Thrive 2050.
I would say it is, some of, some aspects of it are challenging all over. As I just pick up on, on housing, for example, but focus on, on both housing production and housing in the right place. Mayor Bowser, 36,000 new units during your tenure by 2025 is the aspiration. Very big number for the district, 700,000 people. So district has less population than Fairfax, Montgomery, Prince George's. But part of that effort has been, this needs to be an all-eight wards strategy. So it needs to be not just in wards X and Y, but in every ward throughout the, throughout the city. So playing that out is just one, one example. So that is looking for a synonym of, so I don't say fought out or battled out, but you know, vigorous discussion in every ward, vigorous discussions at every advisory neighborhood, advisory neighborhood council.
Yeah. Vigorous discussions, good.
I would think after the district, particularly Alexandria. Those of you who might have lived in Alexandria, had a certain culture, way of doing things just a half a generation ago, and it's a different focus. We can be a mixed-use community, we can bring more jobs here, we can change our, our land use. So the city council profile, I would say, has dramatically changed in the last, in the last 10 years. And they're more vigorously going, going after some of these issues. Jenny Sheets from the Brookings Institution has a new book, it's called Fixer Upper. It's very readable. It's about housing policy in the United States and how the deck stands to, is stacked sometimes against change, how power is really residing in not making change. And she has some ideas, I was going to say prescriptions, that might be a little grandiose to think about changing the dynamics. So I commend her as a speaker to look at some of these issues. As I think you're looking at the nexus between policy and politics and how to move some of these things is how I took your question.
Yeah. I mean, it's, because it's, it's a big question, particularly for Montgomery County, who has historically lagged both DC and Northern Virginia on housing generation. I, I will note from when we did the exercise in 2019, looking at the additional housing necessary for the region, I was communicating with our planning staff, including John and Rod Robinson, on Gaithersburg's allocation, because the numbers assigned to us seemed to be low. And so we were going through projects in the city. And so there were a bunch of projects, I guess, using 2018 data that weren't on the books, where we had already met our allocations for additional housing while we were sitting there at the table. And all the developments since then, and there's been a copious amount since then, are actually above and beyond that which was assigned to us as part of that allocation. So we're doing our fair share up here in Gaithersburg. That's just the comment. And the last question, how do we get the Amazon money up here in Gaithersburg?
Yeah, and I, I think in this last question, you're referring to the Housing Affordability Planning Program. So, or the Amazon Direct Money. Yeah, yeah.
Yep. The $750 million that you mentioned.
Yeah. It might sound like a, a bit of a stretch, but the person who's directing the Amazon Housing Equity Fund, prior worked at a, a private sector civic organization, was very involved in understanding the targets and how they are developed. And I would say that this importance of not just production, but production where, has definitely informed their strategy. So when they came out of the box, it was 125 million for, for Womata. And then Prince George's, I think it was two or three weeks ago, another 80 million around New Carrollton and a Green Belt or so. So I think, I think I'm drawing breadcrumbs to housing that's proximate to transit is where their interests are. They're relatively new, so they, I don't think they've made it to Mark VRE yet. But seems logical that it could be. We're certainly including those modes as high-capacity, high-capacity transit. So I think where there's opportunity, where there's a deal, I think all of their housing investments have been some kind of co-investment. So Barcroft Apartments in Arlington was with, it was with Arlington County. Arlandria was with the city of Alexandria. I, I think there was some financing in the Prince George's that wasn't quite there. So I think that was a part of their investment. So show them the opportunity, have skin in the game would be the path to. Can you do yes for your question?
Just need a email address or a phone. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'll see, I see one member of the public here. Any interested in speaking tonight? Come on up.
In every paper, so I use my phone for notes. Thank you very much. It's really, shoot, it's really nice to actually be here with people. And that was a great presentation. I think you hit a whole lot of very high points and.
Dave, I do want you to state your name.
Yes. I used to do that online, but not here. Dave Belgar, Washington Woods. Thank you, Mayor. That presentation really comes off almost in an idealistic way. And one of the nice things is stating on this side of the dais is I don't have to really be that concerned with all the different myriad ways you have to make decisions on how to spend money and spend effort. So I really want to focus on two things about that presentation, especially with the strategic plan being worked on right now. I hope the council takes, takes consideration for, for these items. We've heard a lot of talk in the news over the last months and even years that the environment has reached a tipping point, that perhaps no matter what we do, we'll never catch up with bringing it back to, to where we need to be. We risk that also in housing. If you look at the graph, I believe it was almost over the last 20 years in our region, we have under-built housing. And we're still well-underbuilt. I don't know what it takes to reach that tipping point where it's almost impossible ever to catch up and bring those housing prices back down. But we risk that. That's clear. One of the things that I think it's important to take into account, like I said, especially with the strategic, strategic plan being worked on, is that Gaithersburg does a great job. We build a lot of good housing, we have a lot of great jobs, we do work on our transit networks. We are leaders in the area. But just because we do our part, and more than our part, does not mean that we should not do more. We're not diminished by doing more. We're not diminished by building even more housing. We're not diminished by building better transit networks. Just because we do much more than all the surrounding areas to address the problems that I think are very evident in the presentation, does not bring us down. It raises us up above everybody. So, you know, with that presentation, with those thoughts, I, I hope in coming sessions the council takes those considerations into account. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I, I just, I checked, I do not see anybody on our, on Zoom at the moment. So with that, any, any further thoughts or? Then we are very grateful for you coming up, Chuck, and, and giving us this presentation and bearing with all of our, our questions here. As you can see, as, as Ryan said, we're, we're engaged, we're, we're interested in the health of the region. We do feel like we're, there's a lot to be proud of here. And as Dave said, we feel like we're sort of leaders in the region and we're proud of it. And we hope others will sort of take the cue. But, but thank you and, and we're grateful for all the work you do and for our partnership.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully gleaned in some of our thinking from a metropolitan perspective, but you all are the Gaithersburg experts and so I hope that some of this applies. And yes, Gaithersburg is looked as, looked upon as a leader in the region.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, that concludes our discussion for tonight. We have, as, as mentioned before, closed executive session immediately following this meeting. The next regular meeting of the mayor and council is next Monday, April 18th. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.